Great, thank you, Elena. Okay, good evening, I'm calling this public meeting to order in accordance with the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, MGLC 131, Section 40, and the Boston Wetlands Ordinance, Boston City Code, Ordinances, Chapter 7-1.4, the Boston Conservation Commission will hold this virtual public hearing on January 17th, 2024, to review the following projects to determine what conditions, if any, the commission will impose in order to protect the interests of the public and private water supply, groundwater, prevention of pollution, flood control, prevention of storm damage, protection of fisheries and land dating shellfish, and protection of wildlife habitat. This evening's hearing, public hearings, will be followed by our regular meeting. In accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, we are conducting this meeting online to ensure public access to the deliberations of the Conservation Commission. The public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Addition to the meeting is being recorded, if you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video. Members of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov or via X formerly known as Twitter by tagging the handle @BostonEnviron and using the hashtag #ConConHearing. For the record, I am Michael Parker, Chair of the Commission. Go around the horn to staff to identify themselves, please.
Elena Itamarri with the Environment Department.
Christopher, what's it in environment department?
DeeDee Hernandez with the Environment Department.
Great, thank you. Okay, now I'll call the role of Commissioners who are present. Commissioner Sullivan?
John Sullivan.
Commissioner Long?
Nick Long.
Commissioner Condon?
Conan Thiruvangadam.
Thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
Alice Richmond.
Commissioner Herbst?
Anne Herbst.
Great, thank you. Okay, first item on the agenda tonight is Notice of Intent for DEP File Number 0061973 and Boston File Number 2023-063 from Four Point Associates on behalf of the Espinat Association for the proposed construction of a new welcoming destination located at 280 Charles Street West End in Boston, resource areas 25-foot riverfront and waterfront, yeah, 25-foot riverfront area, waterfront area, 100-foot buffer to bank. This was continued from the November 15th, 2023 hearing. The applicant has requested a continuance again, as we're still working out the order of conditions. So at that, I would entertain a motion to continue this hearing.
Still moved.
Second, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that carries, let me count, six, nothing, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is Notice of Intent from Boston File Number 2023-064 from Brennan Consulting on behalf of the Boston Public Schools for the proposed construction of a new addition to the existing school, redevelopment of the existing play area, the new utilities and parking revisions located at 105 Cummins Highway, Rosendale, resource areas of 100 buffer to isolated vegetated wetlands. And this was continued from the January 3rd, 2024 hearing. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Hi, I'm Cam Gozine from Brennen Consulting, civil engineer on the project on behalf of Boston Public Schools.
Great, anyone else?
Patrick Malvey Welsh, Boston Public Facilities Department.
Okay, so where we left it off last time was we asked for an updated tree inventory, which you've provided. So I know that's loaded up in the presentation. Why don't we take a few minutes to go over that?
Sure, would you mind going to the first slide? So before talking about the tree figure, I just want to bring up, I believe it was brought to your attention that between our last meeting and this one, it was discovered that the tree that was actually within Boston Concom's jurisdiction, that was within the 100-foot buffer, had been removed sometime last year. Now, I spoke with David Turcot, the PM on the project, and he reached out to BPS, and they said that they had brought in their arborist tree maintenance company directed them to remove any limbs or trees that they felt were a danger to the property, you know, or could fall on students, damage the building. And that tree was one of the trees that was deemed to be, you know, a hazard. And as you can see in the left photo, it is leaning pretty significantly. So I just wanted to start with that. There were also two trees to the west of the site, I believe it was a 16-inch and a 20-inch tree that were also heavily leaning. Those were also removed sometime last year at the same time. So I just wanted to start.
Okay.
By bringing that to your attention.
Okay, appreciate that.
That was performed by Planning and Engineering from Boston Public Schools as part of their routine maintenance.
Okay, thank you, Patrick.
Okay, so if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide. So this is just a tree figure that it shows, you know, total existing trees over six-inch DBH. Now, for anyone who doesn't know, DBH is diameter of breast, at breast height. It's the way of measuring the diameter of the tree, essentially. It's if you stand up to a tree, like a general chest-high diameter of the trunk of the tree, that is what DBH stands for. So, and under Boston Concom regulations, they care about trees that are over six inches in DBH, so total trees that are going to be removed over six inches in DBH on site, 13, six within the building addition, one within the accessible parking next to the addition, two within the fire lane, bus lane, and then four considered invasive species. For a total caliper of, or a total DBH of 76. Now, for proposed trees to be added to the site, total of 50 trees are going to be added for a total caliper of 150, or a total DBH of 151 inches, so not only is there a net increase in total trees, but there's also a net increase in DBH onsite and within the 100-foot buffer. As I stated previously, there is now zero inches of total DBH being removed from within the buffer for trees that are over six inches in DBH. And there's a total of 20.5 inches of DBH being added to the buffer area, so a net increase in trees and DBH onsite and within the buffer area.
Can I ask one question before you move on, please? Is the number that you're giving us, the number as planted or is as expected?
So the 151 inches is total added to the site.
As, as planted?
Yes.
So that they are going to get bigger than that?
Oh, I, I think that might, hmm.
I can answer that. This is Michelle Crowley, the landscape architect. So these are the, this is the caliber of trees that are going in at planting. So yes, all of them are going to get much bigger over time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. So I guess that's really, I believe that was the only.
Yeah, that was the, yep. Okay, okay. Thank you. Elena, do, or DeeDee, do you have anything on this?
Uh, yes, so I just wanted to note for the commission that we had spoken with the team for this project, and we're going to be working with them to send out an email to the appropriate staff at the school with more information about filing with the Conservation Commission and also with the new tree ordinance, just to give them a little bit more context for sort of how to move forward with tree removals like this in the future and who their points of contact should be.
Okay, okay. Sorry, I was just looking back over the inventory here. Okay, that's helpful. Okay, Commissioner Sullivan, what do you have?
Yeah, and the center courtyard there, which is a green infrastructure feature, it looks like you're shrinking that down and putting some trees in the center of it.
That is correct.
And do you know what the subsurface is there?
It's the same material as the previous field area.
Okay. Yeah, and all the Neighborhood Association is meeting with Water Resource Commission on Friday afternoon to talk about flooding, general flooding in the area. That was a commitment we made to them after the last meeting. You know, they're concerned with the water in some of the backyard, so just, this is the point, we're going to be meeting with them. They didn't want any trees taken down, they figured the trees would be up taking all the water. We'll go over that with them. That's all I had.
Okay, and Commissioner Sullivan, just to be clear, when you say "we," you're talking about Boston Water and Sewer Commission?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, myself, along with a couple of engineers, Boston Water and Sewer. We just want to explain the roles of each department and how we all interface, that's all.
Fantastic. Interface and cooperate, don't forget that.
Yeah, unbelievably so, I forgot that too.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Long?
Thank you. Yeah, all of this additional information from Commissioner Sullivan and about the, you know, the more detailed tree inventory, that's all really helpful. Pretty much covers any questions I had. Just wanted to note for some of the other commissioners, a few of these proposed trees calipers are actually larger than we see on a lot of projects. We see trees here that are about three to three-and-a-half inch caliper, which is maybe bigger than average, at least since I've been on the commission, so I just wanted to note that. And yeah, like Michelle Crowley stated, a lot of these will get bigger. That's about it, thanks.
Fantastic, thanks for pointing that out. Just want to mention, Commissioner Wilson is not with us tonight, and he provided some input to the project team as to the the data that we needed and the format that that data should be presented in, and he's seen what the proponents gave to us tonight, and he was good with it. Commissioner Condon?
Thank you, Chair Parker, that's good to know that Commissioner Wilson has seen this, and also good to hear from Commissioner Long about the caliper, since it sounds like good news, and overall it looks great. Just a clarification question on this, the slide with the, with the plan, buffer, does it stand for jurisdiction, the word buffer?
What, what is? I'm sorry?
The word buffer, when you say caliper removed from buffer, what is that?
The buffer is the 100-foot buffer zone for the isolated vegetated wetlands area. So there was initially one tree over six inches in DBH within the 100-foot buffer, now that would be the tree that was under Concom's jurisdiction per their regulations. And that's the tree that in the, that I showed in the first slide had been removed as it was found to be a hazard.
Okay, so from within the buffer, since that tree is already gone, there is zero, zero calipers now, and you'd be adding over 20. I think that's, if I'm reading the slide correctly, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And.
Well, it might not be, it might not actually be correct in the sense that the other two trees that your arborist removed, they were also in the buffer, correct?
Oh, they were not in the buffer.
Oh, they weren't?
They were north of the building addition.
Oh, fantastic.
They were west of the building addition, sorry.
Okay.
They were on that hill right, that, but Sycamore, the houses on Sycamore?
Oh, okay.
On that hill there.
Yep, okay, my understanding was they were in the buffer, but that's good to know. Okay, sorry, Commissioner Condon, go ahead.
No worries. Looking at this picture here, will some of the trees end up in possible water? Will they have to handle wet feet?
I don't believe so. Michelle, would you be able to?
No, we don't have. We don't have any trees in the water. I mean, there are some existing rain gardens that have trees in them, and so they, they are meant to have wet feet, and that's part of, but that was done previously the, by Boston, so. But all the trees that we're putting in are, were not intended to go into into the water.
Nor will they ever be subjected to water during flooding conditions?
Not from, not based on not based on the drawings, no, I mean, these are, there's no tree. The trees are all going in where existing trees are right now.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Well, I was just curious about future flooding conditions and if there are any, any planning that's going on for tree planting that should take into consideration where there could be possibly flooding and therefore choosing the species accordingly.
Right, so the species that are in the rain gardens are chosen for their purpose there. Everything else, the other trees are all up high and on the hillsides and.
Great, thank you, that's all.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
I appreciate you providing the additional information, and Elena, appreciate your work on, on addressing sort of future potential issues, and particularly with, with, within our jurisdiction area. I'm completely satisfied, thanks.
Great, thank you. Okay, Elena, do we have anybody from the public who'd like to make a comment? We had a few comments last time about stormwater issues or stormwater migration, which Commissioner Sullivan has reached out to the neighborhood. Is there anything else?
I am not seeing any hands raised, and we also don't have anything in our inbox.
Okay, thank you. So at that, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing and issue the order of conditions.
Still moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries six, nothing. Okay, thank you.
Was this the, I'm sorry, Chair, but was this the issue with the with the garbage pails as well, or is this was just the one with the trees?
Yeah. Trees, I believe, yeah.
Just the trees, okay, thank you.
I think you're thinking of another location.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Notice of Intent for DEP File Number 0061976 and Boston File Number 2023-067 from Beals &amp; Thomas on behalf of the Boston Public Facilities for the proposed construction of emergency medical facility with two ambulance bays and crew quarters located at 35, yeah, 34 Dry Dock Avenue, South Boston. Resource areas are land subject to coastal storm flowage designated port area, waterfront area, and 100-foot buffer to coastal bank. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening, Commissioners, this is Stacy Minahan, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize, Zoom and my camera are not cooperating this evening, and I didn't want to risk a hard restart of my computer.
No problem.
I'm Stacy Minahan, I'm a professional wetland scientist with Beals &amp; Thomas here for the EMS seaport facility. With me is the project engineer, Paula Thompson, also with Beals &amp; Thomas, as well as Seth Hoffman and G. Shi with Merge Architects, and the project proponent Ellen Gazanik with Boston Public Facilities. So if you could go to the first slide, please. The project lies at 34 Dry Dock Avenue, near the Pier 10 Park in the Raymond L. Flynn Marine Park. So you can see the EMS station proposed location is kind of circled in orange on this slide. If you could go to the next slide. The site, as the Chair noted, lies within previously developed land subject to coastal storm flowage, which extends up to elevation 18.46, Boston City Base. It's also in the South Boston Designated Port Area, although no work will occur within land under the ocean. It's in the waterfront area, which is interestingly associated with bulkheads and seawalls that are subsurface underneath the decking associated with the Pier 10 Park, and also within 100-foot buffer zone to coastal bank, and that coastal bank is similarly bulkheads and seawalls, and then some of those are on the face of the water, and some of these extend under the Pier 10 Park. So as you can see here, the site is largely impervious and already disturbed. It currently houses restrooms, a shed, and a small picnic area. I will note, work within the waterfront area is located entirely within existing impervious areas. So Boston EMS has seen the most significant rate of call volume increasing in this section of the city, and so is proposing a, and actually, if you don't mind going to the slide that has the rendering of the EMS facility, I think that's probably most helpful to start off with. I think it's two after this. Thank you. And we can go back to the other slides as needed. So a two-story, 6,350-square-foot EMS facility is proposed. This view is looking down kind of obliquely towards the water down at the end of Dry Dock Ave. There will be two ambulance bays, crew quarters, and public restrooms. There's also a new outdoor gathering area proposed, and the area beneath the wood decking associated with that gathering spot will be pervious. In terms of resiliency, critical building systems have been elevated to the sea level design, sea level rise design flood elevation of 21.5, Boston City Base, to the extent feasible. That's approximately five feet above the finished exterior grade. So more specifically, the crew lounge, office, fitness, and changing spaces, as well as mechanical spaces are located at the second story. There's not adequate site area to ramp the ambulances up, so the garage remains at grade with an elevation of 16.5, Boston City Base. Because dry floodproofing isn't allowed for this context, the garage will be outfitted with flood vents, and the elevator will recall to the second floor when flooding occurs. First-floor materials low that sea level rise design flood elevation are designed to be impervious to water, and the first-floor slab is pitched shallowly to encourage drainage of water after a flood event. For stormwater, best management practices are designed to treat a minimum of the first one-inch of runoff. Water quality treatment includes deep sump-putted catch basins, and there's a subsurface infiltration system below the sidewalk and an infiltration trench below the pervious decking in order to retain and infiltrate runoff from the building and on-site impervious surfaces. For other resiliency items, the building roof will include a high albedo reflective metal material and TPO PVC membrane, and where possible, the site hardscape will prioritize light-colored paving and vegetated areas. Our Notice of Intent filing provided a fair amount of detail in terms of compliance with the various performance standards for land subject to coastal storm flowage. I've tried to summarize what I thought would be the most salient that the commission might be interested here, but of course, I'm happy to answer questions that you might have.
Fantastic, okay, thank you, Stacy. I just had two quick questions. One was on the dry floodproofing. Why, why are you prohibited from doing that?
So I may lean on Paula or Merge to answer, but essentially, my understanding is that I forget what the acronym is, but there is something that is referenced in the building code that for this particular site context does not allow dry floodproofing, and that's as much detail as I can provide. So Seth G. or Paula, if you know more about why this context doesn't allow it, feel free to jump in.
The building code?
Take that one. There you go.
The structural section of the code, Chapter 16 references ASE 14 in regard to conditions where flooding could occur. And in that document, in Coastal A Flood Zones, dry floodproofing is not permitted. I might have some of the section numbers mixed up there. I think the reasoning is that when you have extremely high flood elevations, the risk of a kind of catastrophic failure are higher. And so the reasoning is you equalize pressure with, with, with flood vent, so that's not a concern. It would be, it would be difficult to construct this building in such a way that it could hold back five or six feet of water above grade.
Understood, okay. So as you said, Section 14, I remember having that issue, I think it was in Hyannis or something. Something I was doing, okay, and that makes sense. So the flood vents for the hydrostatic pressure, I get it. Okay, and then the membrane? Could you just explain the materials used for the membrane, the roof?
The roof, the majority of what you're seeing here is not TPO or a rubber membrane, it's, it's a standing seam metal roof. The, just beyond this, beyond this view, there's a small flat section of roof, and that'll be a rubber membrane, and we've specified TPO. You have, you know, EPDM, PVC, TPO, three different options. TPO, I believe, is slightly more sustainable product. That's why we went with that.
And that'll be a lighter color as well?
It'll be a lighter colors as well, and you can't see it from the ground.
Got it, okay, thank you. Elena, do you have anything on this?
No, we don't have anything, thank you.
Okay, great. Commissioner Sullivan?
I was just curious, is this a relocated two-unit ambulance, or is this a brand-new addition to EMS? How does anybody know?
It's a brand-new addition.
Oh, okay. That was my only question, had nothing to do with Concom, but now I know.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Long?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation, everybody. One quick question was whether this will impact access during construction to the Pier 10 Park, or that kind of, I think it's also called the Dry Dock Green Space.
We'll have as a, as a condition in the drawing set that access to the park is maintained.
Oh, wonderful, thank you. Okay, that was really it for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Condon?
Makes me a little nervous to see EMS so close to water. I would think we want such facilities to be in the least climate-risky areas. But what kind of things will be stored inside? Since you're not allowed to do dry floodproofing, water may come in. So wondering what will be stored there, chemicals?
No chemicals that I'm aware of, there's the ambulances themselves. They have some storage of medications and dry supplies that, that, that feed the ambulances, and we're storing those above grade. But there's no chemicals stored there.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Richmond? I'll go to you and come back?
Yeah, no, I don't.
Oh, you're on, okay.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
I share some of Mr. Condon's concern. I, I know we don't get to say where you put things, but could you speak to whether you looked at other locations? I'm kind of amazed to see something that needs to provide emergency services going in two feet below the current 100-year flood zone with flood vents, you know, that are only going to be a foot off the ground.
I think there's, there's another strong rationale for this location, which is that part of EMS's service territory is the harbor itself. And having ambulances parked near the water so that emergencies on the water come off the water and can get to an ambulance immediately is one of the, the big advantages of this, this project location. So, you know, in short, there is that challenge of the flooding, there's also enormous advantage and extension of EMS service to the harbor itself that's afforded by the site.
Well, I hear that, it does, I instantly, you could feel a little bit right off the waterfront or two foot, two feet below, but as I said, that's, it's not really within our purview, but I, I do have concerns, and I would want a special condition about any kind of hazardous materials being stored in the second floor. And I'd like to know, and I'd like there to be, a, a plan for what triggers relocation of the ambulances in a, in storm conditions, which may happen fairly often. I'm also wondering just about oils and things from the ambulances, as waters are going to slosh in and out of there. What kind of sort of maintenance conditions we should be requiring? Have you, do you have plans about ambulance relocation and under what conditions that will get triggered?
We do, as part of a previous filing, EMS not associated with the commission EMS provided a, a sort of order of operations of, you know, where their ambulances would retreat to, to some muster point, you know, in the case of flood. But I couldn't quote that right now in detail.
Okay, I think that's something you could provide to the commission.
Yeah, agreed.
And I'm not sure if they can be something just about maintaining, you know, cleanliness of, of the floor area in terms of oil and spills, because that sounds to me like there's the, the potential for whatever goes there to go out to the, to get washed out at that point.
The building garage area is equipped with floor drains, and it goes to a oil-water separator separately that will go to the sewer system that's separate from the drainage system that's in the driveways.
Okay, if, if Commissioner Sullivan is good with that, then I'm good with that, thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Sullivan, is that something that needs like a back uh backflow preventer?
Well, we we would, when this plan comes before us, we'll take a look at it because we need to, if it's designed to be able to take floodwaters. We need a way to shut that off because you'll overwhelm the sanitary system with just ocean. So um we we have done that in other places where we have them build a gate that if you're evacuating the building, they shut the gate. So that water not only coming into the floor drains, but into the, if on the first floor, you've got a toilet. All you need is about eighteen inches of water and bam. You're taking the ocean trying to jam it down the sanitary and that backs up everybody's system. So we've done this before down uh Fort Point area. So we'll, 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 we'll definitely take a look at it. And they all, they look so forward for us for doing their plans. I could just see the joy in their faces.
Fantastic. Okay.
I promise that's not why my camera is off.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. Commissioner Herbst, was that it for you?
Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Elena, anybody from the public raise their hand?
I'm not seeing anybody from the public and we also don't have anything in our inbox.
Okay, uh, okay. So with that, I would uh entertain entertain a motion to uh close the hearing, issue the order of conditions. With um two special conditions. One is that hazardous materials will be stored uh on the second floor. And also that um you will um provide us your order of operations plan?
Commissioner Parker, I'm sorry, I just accidentally requested to mute you. I did not mean to do that. Um, I meant to mute myself. I had a a quick clarifying question on the the hazardous material storage. I just wanted, sorry about that. I just um wanted to clarify. So are we, sorry, the special condition is preventing hazardous materials from being stored below the second floor or?
Yeah, preventing, yeah, prohibiting uh hazardous materials. From being stored on the ground.
On the second floor.
Great, thank you.
And did you hear the second part of that one? Did you unmute me? The second part was the order of operations in the file?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good. Uh, so would someone like to make that motion?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
I.
Commissioner Long?
I.
Commissioner Connan?
I.
Commissioner Richmond? Commissioner Herbst?
I'm sorry, I'm I was muted again. I.
Thank you, and myself. I, so that carries six, nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, next item on the agenda is notice of intent for D E P file number zero zero six one nine seven five in Boston file number twenty twenty three dash zero six six from Green International. Affiliates Inc. On behalf of the Mystic River Watershed Association for the proposed transformation of an existing park along the Little Mystic Channel into the Little Mystic Channel Plaza. Um, located at the, in the area located northwest of forty one Medford Street in Charlestown. Resource areas are land subject to coastal storm flowage, waterfront area one hundred foot buffered a bank. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Hi, Danielle Spicer from Green International affiliates is here, um, as well as we have a few others. Um, we have uh Carl Alexander from Mystic River Watershed Association and Chris Weaver from Landing Studio.
Fantastic. Okay, I've been waiting for this one for a long time.
If we can start, I think this is um. There we go. Um, so Carl, if you wanted to um kick it off, um. With kind of the background of it and then Chris will start and then I'll end it.
Yeah, sure. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, on behalf of the project team, thank you so much for the opportunity um to be here tonight. Um, the, this project is part of our ongoing collaboration partnership with with uh multiple city departments in the right. Climate resilient revitalization of the Little Mystic Channel and it's surrounding open spaces. The primary goal of of this project uh going into it was really heat island reduction. Um, and the revitalization redesign of this plaza space for um residents of the adjacent Charles Newtown Housing Development. Bunker Hill Housing Development, Charlestown residents that there's the likes of the channel as it uh continues to uh be be redesigned and reimagined. Um, the the designs that that we're presenting tonight are reflective of a community engagement process that we conducted last year. Um, so we we spoke with a hundred and fifty, over a hundred fifty residents, especially from the Charles Newtown Housing Development immediately adjacent. So uh we're really excited that that this uh um project has been kind of really guided by by public input as well as our resident led steering committee for all of our efforts in in the channel. So uh if you'd like to um afford along to the the project location. Uh, so again, uh, project located in the Little Mystic Channel uh in the northeast uh section of Charlestown. But. And zooming in a little bit closer, you see the uh Charles Newtown Housing Development directly on the channel with the plaza immediately behind it. It's part of the Boston Harbor Walk uh and just also immediately about uh Berry Playground to the east.
Hi, uh, can you all hear me well? I'm Chris Weber with Landing Studio. Yep. So this illustration shows the existing conditions at the plaza. Um, the plaza was built around nineteen seventy at the same time as the Charles Newtown Housing Complex next to it. Um, it's a rather brutalist plaza with a number of like concrete and masonry planters. Um, and all of the surfacing is presently asphalt, which is in pretty bad condition. Um, there are two spots that are completely inaccessible because of steps. So they aren't um available for people that may need to use a wheelchair to get into them. Um, so you see that in this larger part that's um tagged as the inaccessible sunken area. And then this raised part that's um called out as the inaccessible platform. There's also, um, you see at the top of this image, the, there's like a pinch point in the path. That uh pathway along the back is kind of the main desire path of people walking along the harbor walk there and it narrows down to about a two foot wide pinch point there. You can go to the next slide. So a big goal, as Carl said, is addressing the heat island effect. So we are removing all of the asphalt pavement here. It's uh currently the plaza is about uh it's about ten thousand seven hundred square feet of. Of impervious surfaces and we're bringing that down to just forty seven hundred square feet of impervious surfaces. And that really is just the the harbor walk itself, which is remaining. And a new concrete pass that'll run along the back for that desire path I referenced. Um, you'll see that we are taking out one of the um existing planters to reduce that pinch point at the top there. Um, all of the new surfacing is going to be lawn, um stabilized lawn for wheelchair use and stone dust for wheelchair use. Um, the. The planters are being, like, we're tying together the planters with a few new mounds. Uh, they're small hills that. Serve a couple of different purposes. Primarily, we brought them in to help get a mower up on top of the planters. Historically, the the plantings in this area have had an issue with maintenance and they haven't really been. Cared for over time. And through the maintenance agreement we've formed with the maintenance group at the housing complex. We found that lawn and trees would be something that would be easy for them to maintain and and for them to be able to get a mower up there easily. The mounds help to do that. And they also then can double as like a social surface for people to sit up against and lay up against as well as uh helping to make the. The lawn surface more visible from afar as you're walking up to the plaza. Um, next slide. So this is the landscape plan that was in the drawings that were submitted to you. Where keeping the one existing tree that is there, it's a a mulberry tree and we're adding fifty nine new trees. Um, they're a mix of different native species that are, were all selected to be a party in this coastal environment. Um, based on things that could be handled, the salt exposure um and potential um infiltration in the water and in the soil below. And then I'll hand it off to Danielle. Next slide.
Great, thanks, Chris. Um, so uh most of the stuff that Chris was talking about is all the positive improvements that we are doing, but the entire site. Is located within land subject to coastal storm flowage. So we do have an impact with there. So this is just showing um the FEMA map. It's at um the FEMA elevation is elevation eleven and A V D eighty eight. Um, and due to the um. Connections of these mounted systems within the park area, we do actually have a small amount of fill within land subject coastal storm flowage. So if you go to the next slide, um, this is the plan that was included uh with the notice of intent. That basically shows there's approximately uh fifty seven cubic yards or or fifteen hundred cubic feet. Of um fill within the coastal storm flowage and that's um, it is minor, it is. Um, we feel it's going to have a negligible effect on the flood waters associated with the channel. And it's really um not avoidable, um, or it's unavoidable just to do to the programming. Of the redevelopment and improvements within this area. Uh, we want to make sure that um, you know, this area is accessible, ADA accessible. Um, it's got benefits for people enjoying the area. Um, it provides a lot of pedestrian access and and amenities. Um, in this small amount of film, um, as a result of that. Uh, so with that, I'll, I'll just leave it. Well, on the next slide, this is just a rendering showing um. The proposed uh amenities, if you want to go the next slide, and we'll open it up to questions.
Great. Okay, thank you very much. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Um, really briefly, I wanted, I wanted to thank Kayla Jackson from the Boston Public Schools for being here tonight. Um, the property is a uh BPS property and I just wanted to thank her for for being here and also for their ongoing support um for this project.
Great. Thank you very much. And uh I'm going to continue on that vein. Um, full disclosure, I've represented uh Charles Newtown for many years. Uh, and this is the product of probably a seven or eight year effort by the residents there. Um, also uh in coordination with Boston Public Schools, the BPDA, the City Parks Department. Um, a lot of people have touched this project and Mystic River Watershed Association came along like a savior out of nowhere. Uh, and uh took on the feasibility study for this uh and have advanced it to this point. Um, this has really been a long neglected area of the harbor walk. Uh, and with the um Charles Newtown Housing um development next door and then with the uh Bunker Hill B H A property. Which um uh the buildings are being taken down and new housing provided for the residents. Um, this is just in time uh and very welcome. So I want to thank everybody who's worked on this. Uh, Kayla, thank you so much uh from Boston Public Schools. Um, the question I have for you. Um, is um, as far as climate ready recommendations, climate ready Boston recommendations for this site. I think they have um a living shoreline in this area. So does any of this work preclude uh any of the resiliency measures that have been um uh proposed by climate ready Boston?
Um, I I'm I'm going to say I'm not sure on that one. Um. I I I, so everything, when you talk about the living shoreline, um, can you explain a little bit more along that? Everything we're doing is within the upland area, so there's no impact to the the channel or anything like that. So we're not um doing anything along that.
Sure, absolutely. So um if you, um, it's on the website. So if you went and looked at their plans and it sounds like, I know that um the climate ready Boston people have talked to people at the Mystic River Watershed Association. Uh, there's been a bit of a turnover since the beginning of the project. Um, but what's proposed there is to um remove the fence and um have gently sloping, uh gently sloping living shoreline going down to the water. Um, so there's going to be some grading down there. I mean, that's going to be in the future. Um, I'm not sure as I'm looking at this that that there's.
To chime in.
Issues, but go ahead.
Chime in a little bit more. The, the latest that we've seen from climate ready boss and we met them a couple of times as part of larger planning efforts around the channel. And the latest we'd seen, they had two different options proposed for this side of the channel. Um, and both of them, I I think they were slated for further off in their timeline. I think. I I it's either the twenty fifty or twenty seventy timeline um for improvements and. And that I, the the goal that we had this project was to address the immediate conditions of it and then and provide it with an interim improvement. The most that we're doing is the tree planting and the trees wouldn't really obstruct that. The hope would be that the trees that we plant could survive or most of them could survive beyond that improvement. Um, but it wouldn't be a uh any greater difficulty than the current conditions of the plaza in terms of. Of applying a larger scale improvement like they've suggested in climate ready Boston.
Yep, understood. Um, also, I know that the BPDA um got a grant um for some money to study the feasibility. Um, um. Uh, the feasibility of certain resiliency measures, uh, it's going to include this area. And I think that's going to start within the next six to eight months. Um, I might, might not have the timing exactly right. Uh, and I think the thought would be it might update what you've seen from climate ready Boston. So, you know, my suggestion, and I'll mention it to um uh like Rich McGinnis, people like that. Um, my suggestion is you keep in touch with them because there might be some synergies. Uh, that would, you know, make this project better, though it's great already, uh, and um be helpful for everyone. Um, so with that, I don't think I have anything else. Um, Elena, do you have anything on this?
Yeah, so um we had gotten a chance to conduct a site visit um last week and. Uh, I actually wasn't present for that, but um DeeDee and Chris were able to conduct that site visit and I think that DeeDee may have had a few, a few thoughts.
Yeah, uh, so I just have two questions here. Um, I just wanted the applicant to uh confirm that there are no catch basins onsite. And also to clarify the condition of an existing drain that uh I believe Chris and I saw during the site. And then uh the second question is just to get a bit more clarification on the existing fence that's onsite. Um, that separates the channel and the site, um, just to make sure that that's not getting replaced or uh repaired in any way.
So for the catch basins, there are no city catch basins within the site, the drain that we looked at together. Um, historically, the sunken portion was a waiting pool. And so there was a drain in that as part of the infrastructure for that. From observations on the site, it looks to be completely filled in with earth and inactive. We have directions in our drawing set that the contractor needs to investigate that further. So we can determine whether or not it's something that still connects to something and can be used or whether it just needs to be removed. Um. And then regarding the guardrail, the, there is a stretch of guardrail that is approximately twenty four feet, I think, that is. Currently chain link fence instead of the the same steel. Uh, harbor walk guardrail that continues for the rest of the harbor walk. So what we have been proposing there is that we would infill that. Um, in some portions with a new guardrail that matches and then in two portions of it, we we've been proposing. These uh fishing work surfaces that would be uh per the standards for an ADA fishing spot. Um, so it'd be like a lower rail with a a surface that people could set something on and fish at. And the plan is currently to leave the rest of the guardrail, um, as is.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, DeeDee. Uh, Commissioner Sullivan? You want to?
The drain. Yeah, uh, just curious how the drain, I know you mentioned you're going to reduce the amount of uh impervious area. But where does the water flow? Does she flow directly into the harbor or are you bringing the water back and infiltrating it to some kind of stone trench?
It it's, it currently she flows directly into the harbor right now.
Yeah, that's what it does say. So what what are you doing for tomorrow?
Uh, so it's, um, there's no proposed um drainage. It would, uh, the drainage patterns would um remain the same and it would continue under that same condition. But with a a significant reduction of impervious area.
And it looks like a place for people to gather, maybe have lunch or whatever. You have litter baskets or something that, so the people have convenient places to place litter?
Yes, we have a, yeah, we have receptacles at one end of it, at the side that has like the denser set of tables for people to sit at.
And who's the lucky person that gets to empty them and make sure they're clean?
We, we had, uh, we've had an M O U with the um maintenance organization that runs the. That manages the Charles Newtown Housing Complex and they've agreed to empty the trash cans there.
So if a, if a tree falls over or gets mutilated or whatever, is that a problem for Boston Public Schools, uh, Charles Newtown or who? Who's the uh maintenance kid?
So the tree maintenance and mowing would be handled by the Charles Newtown by wind.
Okay, and that's, that's by agreement or handshake?
That's through, that's in that same M O U I referenced. That's through that, that's in that same MOU I referenced.
Oh, okay. All right, and so there's no drinking fountains or any other utilities out there at all?
Nope.
All right, uh, yeah, it just seems that are you putting new concrete in on that walkway? Or is that that you're just having the existing one remain right the way it is?
We are doing new concrete along the um like inland side of the site. Um, so.
Not with the fences, though. With the fences, you're going to leave the existing?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's that's all I had.
Okay, and Commissioner Sullivan, as far as that MOU goes, I have not seen that, but um my understanding is it's the um. The maintenance company that works for wind management. Um, who do a lot of maintenance in that area will be taking care of this.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I I just wanted, I love putting things on the record, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, and if you want, um, we could uh ask that that get um included in the file when we vote on the order of conditions.
I would ask that. Thank you.
Okay, um, Commissioner Long?
Uh, yeah, thank you for the presentation. It seems like a wonderful project. I. I definitely had some similar questions along the lines of maintenance. I think they were um, you know, for the most part answered, but I think, yeah, having that. MOU on file for us would be great and um in general. Um, including a note about who's going to maintain the open space in the NOI is probably um. A good future practice for this kind of thing. Um. So I, yeah, I'm the representative for the Parks Department on the Conservation Commission. And because I'm out in the field all the time, I'm not in the office talking to my colleagues a lot. So I'm wondering. Um, why why doesn't this project require Parks Commission review? Per the uh Boston NOI form that was submitted? Were you working with somebody? In the Design and Construction Unit in the Parks Department on this project? Danielle or Christopher, maybe?
Um, we've been in, I I can, I can uh probably tackle this Carl. Um. Uh, we've been in touch with the Bo- uh Boston Public School Facilities Department um regarding uh the project design. So they reviewed the design set at sixty percent and we'll be sharing with them the final design set once once that's all set to share. Um, so. Um, we haven't shared the set with um BPRD at all.
Gotcha. Yeah, um, just given that it connects to Berry Field and it's. Even if it didn't connect, it's still within one hundred feet of the Boston Park. It does require Parks Commission review. So um you'll you'll need to connect with um. The the names would be Carrie Marsh Dixon and then Liza Meyer on the Parks Commission. Just to at least uh review the plans, um, this is a standard thing for any project. Within a hundred feet of a protected open space uh which includes Berry Field. Um, but uh that was more or less um that piece on the on the Parks Commission Review. Um, I guess. Oh, go ahead.
No, that was just background noise.
Okay, sorry about that.
Oh, sorry. That was my, that was my, my baby, sir.
Everybody has babies, I guess. Yeah, uh, so the other thing was um. I noticed that you are using stone dust for this project. And um I know that stone dust can be wonderful for um, you know, accessibility and things like that. But wha- what is keeping that stone dust from washing into the water? Say with um some of these extreme storms we've been having having with um, you know, a lot of. Rainfall or um coastal storm flowage. Because the the stone dust looks like it's, you know, pretty close to the water there. And perhaps that would be for Christopher.
Yeah, so we we are um using the stone dust with a GeoGrid system so that. Helps to reinforce it and help it stay in place better. Um, I don't know if, I don't think that that would give a guarantee that it couldn't wash away. It would just reduce the chances that it could wash away.
Right, um. And I guess you you probably, given accessibility, you may not want to have steel edging. Kind of on the water side of the stone dust or would that would that be something that you might be amenable to? To have steel edging to contain the stone dust on the side of the little Mystic Channel?
I think if if that were wanted, we might just reevaluate where we put the stone dust. To create a buffer on the water side that maybe we do like the lawn finish there for a strip. Um, just I I would worry about the steel edging for accessibility purposes and having a trip hazard. Um. So I I if the concern is just saying that maybe we give a certain distance of a buffer between. The Harbor Walk edge and where the stone dust starts, I think that 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 that's an easy thing to adjust.
Yeah, maybe like um like a turf lawn buffer or something that you have specked out. Okay. I think that'd be great. I'm I'm somebody who maintains trails as part of my job, so I'm I'm scarred from many uh stone dust repair. On older paths. Um, so that that's that's the main concern there and, you know, I don't know if. Stone dust or pathway repairs are included in the MOU, um, having not seen it. That was basically all the questions that I had. Um, I'm glad that BPS is present. Um, so that was another one of my questions is um. If uh BPS or Facilities Division had a been part of this, but I know that Mystic River Watershed Association is all about partnership. And uh collaboration, so happy to see that. Um, that's it for me. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Long, I have a question for you. Does it change the calculus that it's um? It's Berry Playground, it's a playground, not a park. It's you're saying it's still a protected open space?
It is, it is that in this um this particular, the the Charleston High School fields, which this. Property is a part of the um, they qualify for the one hundred foot rule because of post Berry Field, yeah.
Great, that's helpful.
Yeah.
For future reference. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, Commissioner Conant?
Thank you, Chair Parker. I think the project can only benefit from additional review, probably even enhanced. So I I have this request all the time. This being particularly BPS space, it would be nice to see signage about. The trees and what species they are and any anything else, maybe about sea level rise, climate change. And what kind of habitat this creates when it's a green open space with trees and whatnot. It'd be nice to see signage that. Children and also adults could learn something from. So that's a request. And in terms of the Harbor Walk, how wide is it? I couldn't tell from the plans.
I think the existing Harbor Walk is eleven feet clear from guardrail to edge of concrete.
And the proposed?
We're we're not modifying the Harbor Walk.
So you're keeping eleven feet?
Yeah.
And um internal path where you're eliminating that pinch point and creating a slightly broader path, how broad is that?
That is, it varies along its length. Um, I think it's plus or minus six feet. It's it's like maybe. Five, ten to six, two, so.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's great. I was only asking that because, you know, Harbor Walk by definition is on the harbor and when. When there is wave action or sea level rise, I know there's much of that here, but still there's possibility of that not being accessible or at least wet. And if there's an alternate path that people can use, that's helpful. Sounds like that. Five feet or even that would be very helpful. And the stone dust, I I've had some not so great experience with that as well. It's. Not just the concerns that Commissioner Long brought up, but it could also easily get uneven. And if you're trying to move a wheelchair through it, it gets very difficult. And it's very hard to predict how it settles with time. So I'm what I wonder, you know, what kind of consideration you can have right now to try and avoid those concerns over time. And it can also on during dry days, it could just, um, if kids are running around, you could just kick up a lot of dust that people would be breathing in. So anything you can do, maybe just put like permeable pavement, but in terms of blocks on top of that. To ma- ensure hard um even space that doesn't kick up dust. And it's good in all seasons would be something to consider. On in terms of the maintenance, I wasn't clear. There's the PPS facilities involved. There's this other. Um, entity that you have in MOU with, who is responsible for the maintenance of the space?
Oh, you want to? Um, yep, so uh in terms of uh, in terms of like ru- routine maintenance. Um, so like snow removal, for example, um landscaping, um. Uh, again, kind of like uh trash removal. Um, that's something that um Wind Development, the adjacent property. Our management group for for Charles Newtown uh has provided for the Harbor Walk section on BPS property here. Um, for some time now, um, just for the enjoyment of the residents, um, benefit of the residents. And that's something that they're they've offered again through the MOU um to continue to provide um for this plaza space as well. Um, and uh BPRD also entered into that MOU um to provide more like seasonal work. Um, I'm forgetting what's exactly listed in the MOU, but there's more kind of like uh like the like once annual park uh park maintenance. In terms of like uh debris removal uh as well.
That's helpful. Thank you. Yeah, that I mean, the the spirit of coalition is showing there, which is great. If somebody were to. Experience an issue and wanted to call someone, who would they call from? They they'd see a tree fallen, let's say. Who would they call? Will there be a number posted?
Yeah, um, I mean, a number posted is is great. Um, you know, mine is, it it'd be nice to redirect them to three one one. Uh, uh, in order to to get that logged and then go through to um. I believe it's Boston Harbor Assistance with dealing with three one one requests along Harbor Walk. Um, so. Also, again, another partner that we work with really closely and can kind of determine who would be best at that time to to deal with it, whether it's. It's BPS or wind or or BPRD as well.
Right, it could be confusing, but people might. It's so, it sounds like the general simple perception that people will end up with. Is that it's city-owned space, so they should call three one one if there's an issue. And is that, is that what you're also expecting?
Um, that's uh, yeah, I think that would be probably the best and most legible way to handle inquiries.
Okay, yeah, it's it would be good to see that MOU and I'm I'm glad, you know, that we're moving towards asking that to be included here. But overall maintenance plan and and clarity on who's responsible would be good. It sounds like it's going to be the city. In that case, it maybe it would be good for BPS to say, yeah, we we hear that and that is what. We understand and we're ready for it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Richmond?
Uh, yeah, I have a question about um the uh what was raised by Commissioner Long. Uh, do we um need to wait until the Parks Department signs off on this? Or can we include um in the order of commission uh the order of conditions? Uh, that um it's a requirement. I mean, it's it is a requirement, but I'm just concerned that. Um, it didn't happen and we're sort of sort of going forward uh without that really essential. And required piece.
Yeah, what we, you know, um, that happens a lot. Um, we, it, there's no sequence to that. Um, a lot of projects that come in front of us go get their parks review um after the fact.
And and is there a any, I I, you know, and maybe this is a a question for Commissioner Long, but is there? Based on what he has seen, is there a sense that um there's going to be any issues that, I mean, it would be a very. Unfortunate thing if we, you know, voted to approve and then the Parks Department decided, uh-uh.
So uh Commissioner Richmond, Richmond, my understanding has been that um. Parks Commission Review can include many things, but oftentimes it can be um something like uh fencing or the color of um. Chain link vinyl fencing and um, you know, like the the built environment or like walls. Uh, or benches and but I think um that they may be especially interested in the interface between Berry Fields. And this parcel and um, because I know that. Yeah, I may be mistaken, but I think they're enhancing that connection or making it more accessible, whether it's the Berry Fields connection or. Is that right, Christopher?
Yep, we're um, we're improving it on our side of the line. Um, just to make it align better with what the current pavement is on on the park side.
So, so can I just ask the applicant, I mean, the 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 failure to go to the uh Boston Parks Department. Um, was I I mean, just a function of not knowing that you had to do it?
So so I had seen that hundred foot rule called out and on the parks information on their website, it sounded like they wanted you to. Go there last. Um.
Okay, fair enough.
That might have been outdated or.
Uh, all right, well, I mean, I a- as the chair just said, I mean, apparently it's not unusual that you go to parks last, but. Um, you know, I'm just assuming that if the park department, um, and and that's not to suggest. Anything that you said would create it, but if the Parks Department, um, you know, has an issue, then I. Assume that you would come back to the commission uh to have it resolved. Is that correct?
If it if it ended up changing the project in any material way, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm asking sort of asking the applicant to agree that that's what would happen? Yes, I think.
It's that is what will happen because Eleanor will go out and inspect the site. She has to take a um pre-construction um viewing. They have to let us know when they're starting, so.
Okay, all right. Well, if that, you know, uh, uh, under those circumstances, I don't have any other questions and I wish them. You know, enormous good luck. It's a good luck. It sounds like a wonderful project. And if for some reason the Parks Department has issues, then we will see you again.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Commissioner Herbst?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, Elena, anything from the public?
Yes, we have one hand raised.
Okay.
So, hi, I'm Dave Creely, Deputy Director at Mystic River Watershed. So I'm also a park commissioner. So I can tell you that. Um, uh, we are frequently the last to see projects uh of all sorts and all kinds. So um. The timing issue um that you've mentioned, I appreciate you all bringing it up and we'll certainly circle back to uh the Parks Department. Um, they've also been aware to some extent of what we've been doing. Um, and that we've been talking to them about Berry Field as well because that's another place because of the. Continuous nature of our project with Berry Field, we like to figure out ways we can enhance Berry Field from a climate standpoint too. So. Parks isn't ready, they need a project manager there, but we have been in some contact about that specific issue. We haven't yet circled back to them about the issue of the hundred foot zone, so we'll be sure to do to follow up on that and. I will probably be recusing myself from that vote when it happens. So. Just wanted to let you know there's some, there's some conversation that's been happening already. And thank commissioners for your attention to this.
Great, thank you, David. And we're definitely looking forward to uh improvements over Berry Field. Next up. Okay. Okay, um, anybody else from the public?
I'm not seeing anybody else and we also don't have anything in the inbox.
Fantastic. So with that, I would entertain a motion. Go ahead.
I spoke too soon, I'm sorry. I think uh uh another hand just went up.
Okay.
Named iPhone.
Do you have the number?
Oh, no, another hand went down, so maybe it was by mistake.
Yeah, I don't see any hands. Here we go. Another hand up. I see two hands up, but I don't see. Oh, here we go. The iPhone needs to be unmuted.
Uh, it is.
Here we go.
All right, couple of just quick questions. Uh, this is Gail Miller calling from East Boston. Um, I I really enjoy listening to these hearings. Um, I just have a quick question about. Um, there was a a mention of turf. Is that going to be artificial turf as a suggestion on on some of the application there?
No, it would be lawn, like that's a lawn.
Okay, well, speaking of natural lawn, I'm just wondering where we're so concerned about heat islands and all these applications and projects. Um, is it is it necessary that we even have so much? Well, a space for the concrete and can we not have more more lawn or more kind of you know, something other than, you know, just a mass of concrete? Um, it would be nice to be, you know, somewhat cool on the on the shore. And I and I want to concur about the stone dust. There is some wrapping around our um waterfront with stone dust. And I see it just spilling over and I just think it's a messy application. And I would, you know, I mean, I'd rather have larger stone, but you know, that can be lifted up by the rising sea level that we have now and that we certainly experienced this weekend in a massive way um all around the harbor. So I I would I would suggest mixing the stone dust altogether. I'm not I'm not seeing it as a welcome application on our waterfront um in particular. And that's all I have. If somebody would like to maybe address that.
Okay, thank you, Gail.
Um, so for the concrete, the the majority of the concrete that will still be on the site is uh the the existing concrete Harbor Walk. And that we we don't want to modify because it's structurally integrated with the 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 seawall below. Um, so we're not touching that. Um, the the little bit of concrete that we are adding along the back, we are opting for that just to help to integrate it for accessibility purposes with that existing concrete Har- Harbor Walk that we think we could reduce diff- the difference in settlement between the two by matching same material, so people could take that back path um without having to go over a lip. Um, and for the stone dust, we're we're definitely hearing it and we will um we'll go back to the drawing board on that material and do maybe some other permeable favor material.
Great, thank you, Christopher. Uh, Eleanor, anybody else?
I'm not seeing any other hands.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you. Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to uh hearing issue and order of conditions with a special condition that the um uh final executed MOU uh for the maintenance of the um plaza um be uh submitted to um submitted to staff.
And also ask Chair Parker for any updates on what would replace the stone dust or what alterations they would to mitigate any concerns really related to stone dust?
Yeah, I think we will find that out when they um check in before construction.
Sure. Gotcha. Well, so moved in case.
Great, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
I vote aye. That carries uh six nothing. Okay, thank you and good luck. Next item on the agenda is a request for a determination of applicability from FOTH Infrastructure and Environment LLC on behalf of the Massachusetts Port Authority for the proposed performance of two um land-based soil borings to determine the geotechnical properties at the site located at twelve fifty seven and twelve sixty three Saratoga Street in East Boston. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
I am. Um, good evening. Madeline Sewell, uh Environmental Manager with Massport. Um I am also joined by Sam IS, who is the Project Manager uh for Massport Capital Programs. And Susan Nelson and Fiona Vardy from FOTH. And I'm going to pass it over to Fiona um to tell you guys a little bit more about the work.
Great, thank you. I'm sorry for the mispronunciation of FOTH.
We get it a lot.
Okay, floor is yours.
Okay, great. Um, I believe, sorry, I just wanted to make sure. Um, should I? Oh, there we go. Okay. Um, so as Madeline and and Commissioner Parker mentioned already, this is a geotechnical investigation for twelve fifty seven and twelve sixty three Saratoga Street in East Boston. And next slide, please. The project is located at twelve fifty seven and twelve sixty three Saratoga Street uh in the northwestern portion of the Belle Isle inlet. Um, till you can see in the aerial image below, the product location is highlighted. Uh, Saratoga Street runs along the northern edge of the site. Um, to the right is across the bridge is Winthrop. Um, and to the south is Boston Logan Airport. Next slide, please. The project purpose is to conduct a subsurface investigation consisting of two land-based geotechnical borings to support the design process of replacing uh the deteriorated timber warp structure on the site. Um, the image to the right shows the deteriorated wharf what it looks like today. Next slide, please. Um, as I mentioned, the two, the work includes the two land-based geotechnical borings from a truck-mounted drill rig. Um, each boring will be approximately four inches in diameter, advanced to a maximum depth of approximately forty feet below the ground surface at the two locations. With continuous sampling for the top fifteen feet of boring, then standard penetration test sampling will be obtained at five foot intervals and or at the change of soil level. And this image on the slide is a small drill rig uh typical of the equipment that will be used. Next slide, please. This is an image from the proposed site plan. Um, you can see the proposed soil boring location number one is toward the southern end of the site. And the second location is a little bit to the north of that. Um, both, as I mentioned, are land-based. Thank you. Um, yeah, so let me know if you have any comments or questions.
Great, thank you. Only question I have, how long will this take?
Um, we're expecting it to take um at least a couple of days. Um, and the, I mean, it just depends on the site conditions, if it's wet from rain um et cetera, but it shouldn't take more than a few days.
Okay, great, thank you. Eleanor, do you have anything on this?
Um, I don't have anything on this. Dee Dee, did you have anything on this after your site visit?
Yep, uh, just two quick questions. Um, so for the soaring soil boring holes, uh, will those be covered um overnight um after they've been taken out from the ground? And also, uh, can you just confirm that there will be no overnight parking of equipment uh or the truck that will be used? Uh, where the soil near the soil borings, will there be taking?
Um, so we will be coordinating with the contractor, um, which is Hardiman. Um, and the the I believe the poles will be covered. I can I can double check with them. Um, but the um, but it it is expected that will be some equipment left overnight. Um but as I said, uh, uh, we're not expecting it to take long. Um, and the rig it uses a biodegradable hydraulic fluid, so they're not expecting it to have um hazardous impacts to the site.
Perfect, thank you.
Great, thank you, Dee Dee. And actually, Dee Dee, as you were talking, um, it um uh made me think a little bit. Um, I believe the holes have to be covered uh to prevent any surface foliation of the soils. If they if they were uncovered, for instance, it would um uh what would I say, uh, what cause a false positive or um uh it would, uh, I didn't even know how to phrase it, but it would somehow contaminate the purity of the sampling, right? If something else got in there. So I think as a matter of course, they cover them up every day when they're done. Um, Commissioner Sullivan?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Long?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Mr. Condon?
That site seems so dilapidated. Um, how is the access going to be managed so things don't really get worse? Because it just seems a little precarious.
So the there's a a driveway that can access the site um via Saratoga Street. Um, and they won't be impacting where the deteriorated wharf is. Um, they can just drive across the site.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Herbst?
No questions, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Eleanor, anybody from the public raise their hand?
Uh, we have a raised hand uh under iPhone.
Are they unmuted?
Um, I I don't want to be a familiar commenter here, but um uh this is Gail Miller again. I'm I'm with friends of Belle Isle Mark. Um, and we're happy to see uh Massport going forward on this. This has been long neglected, I might offer. Um and I'm just wondering what the timeframe is after um these uh borings will be um completed or examined or tested and um because it it really it's 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 quite dilapidated there and that inlet isn't really that wide. And I think um it's been impacted uh as we've been going along, so um, I just wonder um if you can provide it some timeframe that we could hopefully count on.
Okay, thank you. Fiona, do you know the answer to that question?
Fiona, I might actually kick that to Sam. Um, Sam, if you want to just speak to the overall project.
Uh, tha- thank you, uh, Mr. Parker, and thank you for your question. Uh, we we are working very diligently at the this site and uh uh there's no timeframe right now. Uh, we have to go through uh, as you can see, we've been uh working with CONCOM on the RDA application. And once we go through it, we gotta do through the geotechnical test borings. And we have to do uh uh complete the plans. We call it the uh uh designed documents, which will take uh at least, I'm gonna say, six months plus or minus. Uh, so with our consultants, so uh right now I don't have honestly a timeframe when the project will be completed. But we uh we want, we we can provide you with information at a later time after we get through the uh the permitting process. And I know uh Madeline has been uh working very diligently at getting through the permitting. But we have a quite a bit to to do right now. To get through the permitting process.
Okay, thank you, Sam. Okay, Eleanor, uh, anyone else?
No one else.
Don't see anyone. Okay, great. So with that, I would entertain a motion to issue a detect uh yeah, a negative determination of applicability with standard erosion controls.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries six nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Sam. Uh, next item on the agenda is a request for an extension for DEP file number zero zero six one seven six six from Niche Engineering on behalf of Seaport L five Title Holder LLC for the proposed demolition of an existing parking lot and construction of a new building, underground parking garage, proposed sidewalks and associated improvements located at one to twenty seven Boston Wharf Road, South Boston. Resource areas land subject to coastal storm flowage. Um, Eleanor, did you want to handle this?
I'm actually not sure if there's a representative from the team on the call.
Hi, Eleanor. Dan Sullivan with WS Development.
Perfect, thank you, Dan.
Okay.
Um, so hi, uh, Dan Sullivan here on behalf of Seaport L five Title Holder LLC. The L five project is a seven hundred thousand square foot tower with seventeen stories over a three-level parking garage. Um, the project is seeking an extension to the order of conditions that was issued um in February two thousand twenty one. The project construction schedule was initially and remains uh thirty-six month schedule for the target substantial completion date of July two thousand twenty four. Uh, current construction activities include the MAP installation, interior finishes, uh elevators, site work and landscaping. Um, again, our target completion uh for all that work is remains July two thousand twenty four, and we are respectfully requesting an extension to allow construction to continue in compliance with the previously approved or conditions.
Okay, um, okay, thank you, Dan. So I know the question's gonna come up. Uh, why wasn't it completed within the first three years?
It takes a long time to permit and build a a a building. That was it. It it's a long permitting process and the, you know, the Conservation Commission, we we completed that in February two thousand twenty one and we started construction in July and it's July twenty one to July twenty four. So this was it was really always going to happen. We tried to push the schedule, but
Yep.
Here we are, yeah.
Understood. Yep, it's not uncommon. Just wanted to get the question out of the way. Okay, um, Eleanor, do you have anything on this?
Sorry, nothing on this.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sullivan?
No questions.
Commissioner Long?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Condon?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Richmond?
I I just have one question. Is this then um continued for three more years?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Herbst?
Nothing for me.
Great, okay. Uh, Eleanor, anybody from the public?
No hands raised and nothing in that box.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to extend the order of conditions for DEP file number zero zero six one seven six six for additional three years.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries six nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, um, there has been a number of continuances continued. Um our notice of intent for DEP file number zero zero six one seven zero four in Boston file number twenty twenty dash zero zero seven, DEP file number zero zero six zero yeah, one seven seven two in Boston file number twenty twenty one dash zero one zero, DEP file number zero zero six one nine six one, Boston file number twenty twenty three dash zero five one, DEP file number zero zero six one nine five seven and Boston file number twenty twenty three dash zero four seven. The commission will now begin its regular meeting. Uh, first item on the agenda is a request for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number zero zero six one six seven zero for the construction of a ten-foot wide multimodal green link path located at the end of Arboretum Road in Rosendale. Uh, resource areas or riverfront area, one hundred foot buffer to inland bank. Eleanor, um, what do you have on this? Or maybe Dee Dee, since you were out?
Yeah, Dee Dee, take it away.
Yep, so staff conducted a second site visit on last week. And we saw that the erosion controls and other construction materials were removed. Uh, so staff recommends issuing a certificate of compliance tonight.
Fantastic, thank you. Um, do any commissioners have any questions for Dee Dee?
I'm just flagging I have to recuse myself from this, given the Parks Department's involvement in the project.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so with that, I'd entertain a motion to issue a certificate of compliance for DEP file number zero zero six one six seven zero.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that carries five nothing. Thank you. Okay, um, next up is administrative updates. What do we have?
I have a few things to note, but um Kat McHamless is here from the Environment Department to talk us through an item. So Kat, I will turn this over to you.
Hi, everyone. Always such a pleasure to come before the Conservation Commission. Hope you're all well. Um, so I am here tonight to share an administrative update about a proposed land acquisition along the Condor Street um waterfront um uh in East Boston near the existing Condor Street Urban Wild. Um, the site consists of two parcels that are currently owned by Verizon, um totaling approximately um one hundred and eighteen thousand two hundred and twenty-six square feet um located on the northern side of Condor Street facing the Chelsea Creek. Um, this includes approximately twenty-nine thousand eight hundred square feet of uh upland and tidal upland area um and approximately eighty or eighty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-six square feet of permanently submerged area that is underwater. Um, so this is a site that was included as a high priority um item or area for land acquisition um uh potential under the Parks Department's parcel priority plan, um because it scores really highly across the categories of high heat exposure, um coastal flood risk, uh social equity and um uh poor public access. Um, and so in terms of work completed to date, uh the city obtained um in partnership with the Parks Department and the um uh in their open space acquisition program and the BPDA, um an appraisal of the property, a title report and a phase one environmental site assessment that showed no notable um site contamination. Um, we've had conversations with Verizon, who has agreed to sell these two parcels to the city. Um, we've had conversations with Verizon, who has agreed to sell these two parcels to the city, and a purchase and sale agreement has been drafted, uh, which is currently under review with the city's law department. Um, and this acquisition would be funded through the city's fund for open space acquisition held by the Parks Department. Um, and really, our goals for acquiring this land is open space preservation in perpetuity, um, potential, uh, restoration of the property, um, and maintenance of the property, um, potential future integration with the Condor Street Urban Wild. That's just a, a little bit away from this, uh, these parcels. Um, and possibly, uh, continuation of the harbor war, uh, harbor walk all to be explored. And that's it.
Great, thank you. So, um, this is a sizable acquisition. This is three acres. This is the largest one since I've been on the commission. Um, and so you said it's going to be the Boston Open Space Acquisition Fund that, um, purchases the, uh, property from Verizon. Then it will be assigned to the custody and care of the, uh, CONCOM?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, fantastic. And, uh, as far as the connection to the urban wild, will there be a connection, um, at some point?
That is the goal.
Yeah, okay, fantastic. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sullivan, any questions for Kat?
No questions.
Commissioner Long?
No questions. Thanks, Kat.
Commissioner Conant?
This is very exciting. What's the plan for the water sheet portion of this, Kat?
Yeah, we would be leaving it as it is. Um, if any, if there is any potential for activating the water sheet, we would be exploring that, um, after the acquisition takes place.
When will the acquisition be complete?
Uh, once we, uh, make sure that you don't have any concerns as the Conservation Commission, uh, we will go back to the law department, uh, finalize that purchase and sale agreement that Verizon has already, I believe, had a chance to review, and we will move forward with the acquisition as soon as possible and hope to come back to you, um, within the next couple of hearings to, uh, get the acquisition approved.
And did I hear you say there is no soil contamination?
No. Or well, yes, there is no soil contamination.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
I only want to say thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Herbst?
Um, I'd love to see, uh, a plan photo, something. I mean, I, I think it's exciting, but I think, um, would be great to get an idea of what this looks like. I, and I wonder, um, I mean, I could go in our files, but I think generally, when you bring stuff forward, it would be great to see what it actually is. Um, and I'm, I, I, I'm wondering, I feel like we've had a conversation once about things that go into conservation. Does it limit what you can do with them? Um, so when you talk about activating things, is, is that any kind of concern? Yep. I don't remember what the limitations were, so there may be none that we'd be concerned about, but, um, I'm wondering if that has, has come up as something to consider.
I don't believe it has yet. And we can also, we do have some slides that I, I had prepared that are actually at the end of the presentation, so I'm happy to, or can maybe ask, um, Elena to pull those up.
That'd be great.
Yeah, so thank you, Elena. Um, yes, if you want to skip to the next slide. That shows where the, where the property is. So you can see that, um, you know, the, the parcel is about seventy-five percent underwater. Um, and about twenty-five percent of the overall square footage is, um, actual land. Um, and so you can see the proximity to the Condor Street Urban Wild.
Okay, thank you for that. And ma- and maybe, I don't know, Commissioner Long knows more about things you can or can't do once things are conservation land.
I think, I think when, if this were to be acquired, it would be noted that it's for passive recreation, so like things like active recreation, um, like any sports or, um, maybe a few other activities would be excluded from that. Um, there may be more that I don't know about. I know that Condor Street, due to its contamination, is under different activity use limitations, but sounds like this, that's not an issue related to this. Um, yeah, but that, that's, that is a good question.
So, but, but just to follow up now on what Commissioner Long has said. Um, we've just been told there's no contamination on the site, and, and that is correct. Again, I just want to emphasize that fact.
Yeah, the, uh, the phase one environmental site assessment revealed that there was no notable contamination. There's pollution, like there's definitely some dumping of debris and trash over there that we would want to clean up. Um, but the soil is not contaminated, um, which I agree was, was a little surprising considering its proximity to some of these other sites that have been contaminated.
Okay, great, thank you.
Great. Any other questions from the commissioners?
I'm sorry, could you just, now that I see, could you say? What's next door on the left side? The green spaces there?
Yeah, the left side, uh, we, I think it's referred to most commonly as the Hess site. Uh, it is owned by the BPDA, but I believe has, um, a ground lease to the East Boston Community Development Corporation. And, uh, they, I believe, have plans for redeveloping the property, but it's been held up for various reasons.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Herbst, they, they came in front of us, I think it was two or three years ago?
I think for a berm wrapping the property, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, they've got some big plans.
Okay.
Great. Thank you, Kat. Thank you for the preview. Um, Elena, what else do you have for updates?
Do we have to vote on that, Michael?
No. No, just a, just a preview of coming attraction.
I'll be back for a vote later. Thank you all.
Thank you, Kat. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Kat. Um, so the two other updates that we had were two administrative approvals that were processed in the last few weeks. Um, the first one is for the replacement of an existing seawall railing that's located on Castle Island. And the other one is for, uh, three exploratory borings located in the buffer zone along Bennington Street, but outside of LSCSF. Um, and there are more details on that, uh, in the drive folder. Please feel free to review those, and please let me know if you have any questions about them.
Okay, any questions? Fellow commissioners? Okay, okay, so with that, uh, we're on to acceptance of orders of conditions. It looks like they're both of, uh, DCR vintage, so we're holding off on those as you work through, uh, uh, order of conditions issues with, uh, DCR. So, um, last item on the agenda would be the acceptance of the meeting minutes from April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, January third, twenty twenty-four. I've reviewed both, um, meeting minutes. They were done very well, very few edits. Uh, and, um, so with that, I would entertain a motion to accept both, uh, meeting minutes from April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three and January third, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Conant?
Uh, and there's a hand up. I don't know if it's from before.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Um, we're in our, um, regular meeting now, so there's no public, um, comment, anyone? Uh, Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
And Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries six, nothing. Okay, thank you. Uh, last motion is our favorite motion, motion to adjourn by acclamation. So thank you very much, staff, uh, DeeDee, Chris and, um, Elena, and, uh, we'll see everyone else. I think we have three weeks off now.
That sounds right. Uh, February seventh is our next hearing.
Okay, everybody enjoy these three weeks. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.